Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 12, 2018 regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, we have four items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to each agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card. And if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Suti, do we have any public comment cards for our agenda item number one?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Will you please sound that item then?
First item this evening is discussion of new public safety facility. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Good evening, and council. While this comes up, tonight, we wanted to bring back the public safety facility on Highway nine to give you an update of where we are. As part of that process, I wanted to go back through a little bit of history on the project to make sure that we were all starting out on the same page. So back in 2010, 2011, when Cambridge High School was under construction, there was a lot of discussion about the impact that the high school was going to have on surrounding traffic patterns. In particular, there was some discussion about the Bethany Bend, Highway nine intersection in addition to the Cogburn-Bethany Bend. Because at that time, we didn't really know where the district lines were going to be drawn. And so there was some discussion that there would be a lot more traffic coming from the southern end than ultimately ended up what happening. But at that point, we just didn't know. And so we were looking for a piece of property that could serve both to assist the school and to assist the city because we knew we had a limited time at the 13,000 Deerfield address where all of our facilities were located at that point. So this piece of property, which is adjacent to Q BBQ, was the only piece available that provided both a site for our new facilities as well as the access to the back portion of the school. So through that process, we traded a piece of property. We traded about 1.3 acres to the school in exchange for them building the access road from Highway nine to the back portion of the school. And that's the road that's currently on that piece of property today. If you look at our facilities that would be housed here, they're currently located at 13,000 Deerfield Parkway, which is our old facility. After we vacated our administrative space over there, we left court and police with 12,000, a little over 12,000 square feet at that facility. One of the important things to note about that facility, it was never really intended to be a long-term home for police and court. When that building was originally built, it was not built with that type of use in mind. And inherent in that type of construction are some administrative risks that go along with that. So when we look at one, we have the lease on the property. So the lease has two key dates. The end date is a September 30, 2020 date. But there's also an early out date, May 31, 2019. And so the goal would be to try and hit that May 31 date and get out early and get into the new facility. But we're going to be very, very tight on time to do that. So hopefully, if we don't make that May 31, we'll be able to negotiate some time between that May 31 and the September 30, 2020 date. One of the other risks we have is that our evidence storage for police is all currently stored with Alpharetta. And so we have a lease with Alpharetta. Annual lease runs about $60,000. But when you have that requirements with another facility and another jurisdiction, there's always the opportunity that that agreement can go away. So this facility would give us an opportunity to control our own destiny as far as that's concerned. Fire administration currently operates out of Station 43. But we also have a ladder truck that operates out of Station 81, which is the old station number one down in Alpharetta. And Bob will go through a little bit of that with you. And then finally, one of the things that we're looking at is ultimately Station 42 will need to be replaced. We have looked on a strategy on how to make that replacement. But it looks like what we will have to do is replace it in its current location. In order to do that, this station would serve as a temporary home for the engine that's currently at Station 42. Would you give us an opportunity to rebuild that station and then move them back up to Station 42 and that's complete later, after these facilities are done? And when we talk about the need for the station, I'll let Bob kind of go through a couple of these slides to give you a little bit more information.
Good, Mayor, Council. The existing coverage map that you see here is, it shows our call volume for 2017. And what you see here is the red dots and the blue dots. The red dots are fire calls and not necessarily structure fires, but anything that does not fall under an EMS category. The blue dots are EMS calls. And what we've shown here is in Station 41 territory, the EMS calls were 222 and fire calls were 155. Station 42 was 221 calls and fire calls were 151. Station 43 was 97 EMS calls and 95 fire calls. The proposed fire station area there shows there are 615 EMS calls and 373 fire calls in that area where the fire station is proposed. That's 37% of our call volume is in that Deerfield area. So with the proposed station there, you'll see, I'm sorry, went down the wrong way. You'll see the new facility there and the coverage it provides to the area where it's our greatest call volume. Also, you'll show that our greatest density is down there. So with the number of hydrants that we have, as well as the development with the businesses and the apartment buildings that we have in that area. So the goal here is eventually is to move our ladder truck out of Station 81 into this new facility. And that will then provide us the coverage. You'll see the two-tone color, the darker color and the lighter color. That's a one and a half mile from the fire station and a two and a half mile from the fire station. And those are ISO guidelines that we have to follow. That's how they use their calculations to determine what our coverage is. So you can see the coverage that that area is providing and actually even overlaps a little bit into the Alpharetta area.
So as I mentioned before, just inherent with that type of building because it never was built specifically for police or court-type facilities, there are a number of deficiencies that we look at when we were designing the new facility. And I'll let Bob kind of go through the new facility, but those have all been addressed in the plan and new construction for the police, court, and fire facility. Bob?
All right, so just a little snapshot of where we are currently in the design process. We've just completed what we call the pre-design phase. And the pre-design phase really achieves two main goals. One is it develops a program, which is more of your spatial needs, room types, sizes of rooms, locations, adjacencies, major equipment that may be needed. So that's one. And the other one is a preliminary cost estimate. We're trying to get to fine-tune the cost and where it's appropriated and how it's appropriated and to develop a construction budget as well as a project budget. So the total project budget. So that's really what we'll be looking at tonight. So the site plan that's in front of you, Highway nine is, let's see, it's on my right. Hopefully, it's on your right. Highway nine, it's labeled. And then the school is on the opposite side. And that's school road to the bottom of the page. To the north is Q and the self-storage. So what the site plan where we've done here is we've created two buildings. One is going to be fire and fire administration. So that's the firehouse next to Highway nine and fire administration. And then in the middle of the site, we're putting in the police court facility. Oh, can you use this? Yeah, okay. So this is the fire station right here. And then this is the police. And this area here would be the court. So we have some blowups of this. But we did decide to go with two buildings here. It's, I think it's satisfying more of the functional needs. Number one is the site's got a topography that drops eight, 10 feet from the fire station to the police building. So with that kind of topo change, it kind of almost warranted having two separate buildings right there because that will save us quite a bit instead of trying to manipulate eight feet of soil. The other one would be access. So again, with access on the site, you could see that the fire trucks here would be able to get direct access here onto Highway nine. And then when they return, they'll just come right back here, swing around, and swing back into the rear of the bay. So they'll be drive-through bays, which is something the fire department really wanted. And then the, so this whole center section here is all staff parking. You'll have fire staff here. You have police staff in this area here. And then you have fire admin and visitors in this area. These little boxes here are demonstrating gas storage and, you know, different fuel storage, gas and diesel storage, little dumpster area. And then if you swing back in the back of the police building, this is all public parking for court. So their entrance would be to the back of the building right here. This is the plaza. And court will have its own entrance and police will have its entrance. This will be more of a police staff side. So the other thing that the two buildings is going to achieve for us is identity. Because both of these buildings really are different type of buildings. A fire station and a police station are totally different. So I'll be able to really design both of these with the help of the consultants to really identify the fire station to look like a fire station and the police court to really have its own identity as well. So that was another plus out of the two buildings. So if we go to the next slide, we can zoom in. This is a blowup of the actual firehouse and fire admin. So again, looking at the cursor on the right side of the page here, this whole wing here is the fire administration wing. This is a common lobby. And then this is the firehouse. These are the bays. And then this is the private side of the firehouse. So this is the public side is along this corridor, which is shared with admin. And then this is the private side, which is, would be your day room, your exercise, and your bunk area. And again, the base is a three-bay total drive-through. We do have a little fire tower for training purposes. It's not a burn tower or anything. It's just a visual. It'll actually incorporate, look just like the regular building and kind of give it a nice feature. But they will be able to use it for training purposes. So if you really look at this design, I do want to point out that we were really working hard on the efficiency of it. There's really no hallways. So what we call the net to gross is very low. We're really trying to utilize most of the building and minimize all the excess wasted space. We did the same concept here at City Hall and it was pretty successful. Next one would be the police building. So the police and court. So like I said before, in the front, right here, we're going to have a plaza. Each section will have its own lobby. We'll have a police lobby here for the public and a court lobby here for our court days. So this side here is the court. There's a court administration here and courtroom, which will also dub up as a community room. So this would be kind of a shared room, multipurpose room, almost similar to this room here. The size of which is about two feet narrower than what we have here. I think it's 38, we have 40 here. And it's approximately from this podium back. So it's slightly smaller than what we have here, but it just met the needs of what they needed for court and for community space. We have a Sally Portoff on this side, which is also assisting on transport for the court. Then with the police, we have CID in this quadrant. We have uniform patrol in this quadrant. And we have SSD in this lower quadrant. Some shared services in the middle, like break rooms and bathrooms. So again, this design actually comes out to 16,000 feet of a footprint here. And then on the lower level, what you're seeing on your right side is around 5,000 square feet. So because the site slopes and we're getting that topography change, it's kind of advantageous for us to kind of incorporate a basement. We're getting that basement as part of the grade. So what I did was I put all the basement functions, I put all the storage functions, I should say, in the basement. So everything in the basement is more of a long-term type of storage. Evidence storage, armory storage, and we put the EOC down there for security purposes. So that would be down there. And it would kind of be used as an EOC. So we don't have to keep using the courtroom for an EOC. It's just more efficient to use it there. So as far as the plans, let's see, the police would come in through the back. The staff would come in this way. So they'd have a little staff lobby. And again, the public would come in in the front. So now let's take a look at the second half of the phase, which is the cost. So with the cost, we looked at the fire station being 13,800 approximately square feet. And that's, we're running a cost of around $262 a square foot. Police court is 21,400, that's including the basement. So that's running at a cost of around $285 a square foot. And then we have the site work, which is around three and a half, almost 3.6 acres. And so the site work includes like underground water storage, fuel tanks, you know, everything that's associated with the site, the parking and whatnot. And that's coming out to about 2.5 million. And then we have the design fees and FFNE is furniture and equipment. There's some security and AV in there too. I didn't write it all out, but there's a couple of little items in there that are associated with the project. And that's all part of the 2.7. So the total project cost right now is very close to what we initially estimated when we started the pre-design process, which is around 14.8. We roughly thought around 15. So we're roughly running about what we initially thought would be our baseline. Now, again, this doesn't include LEED certification. So I did want to bring that up because there is always, every time we do a project of a certain caliber and this fits that caliber, we have to come back to council and just get the advice of council whether or not they want to pursue LEED. And LEED really runs maybe around 8% more to really do it. There's a lot of administration with LEED and a lot of construction costs associated with LEED. There's a lot of tracking, not just the filing for it, but actually doing all the actual tracking. They have to hire a separate consultant. We'd have to have separate commissioning. So what we did, just to let the board know on City Hall, we didn't pursue LEED here. But what we did was we did a scorecard and we went for all the points that would be equivalent to getting a LEED certification. So like City Hall met all the LEED requirements and we would have been certified for a LEED here. So we, and we constantly monitored that all the way through to make sure that we met those standards. So it's up, it will be up to the council on a future date to determine whether or not they want LEED. But if you do, it will increase this cost and it's something I would have to kind of build in. So the other thing to think about with the project cost is quality. And again, the quality that I'm shooting for here is the same quality that I did at City Hall. These are different buildings and they're going to be designed differently. I mean, a police station, a firehouse is different than an administrative City Hall. But the quality level is going to be the same. And when I did City Hall, we really looked at it as a 50-year project. We said this building will probably outlast all of us, be 100 years. There are City Halls that are very old in Georgia and they're still functional and used. But 50 years is about the maximum you can, you can throw on a building in today's kind of marketplace. You say 50 years, that's like a lifetime building. So all the products and materials would be at that level of quality. I will say that construction trends going forward are going up in price. I mean, I think everybody's aware that interest rates are probably going to rise and are set to rise slowly incrementally over time. And the cost of materials, things are getting busy, availability of labor. So I don't see us walking into a trend where we'd say, oh, you know, if we waited another year, maybe the prices would get lower. If anything, I think the escalation is going to keep getting harder and harder. So I think our timing is perfect. I think we're good where we are. Things haven't really super escalated, but things are getting a little tougher. And just to give you a feel for the market, you know, seeing what we're seeing out there. And also the VE exercise. So all of these numbers are projected, but we haven't really looked at a value engineering exercise yet. And I will say, when we did City Hall, we cut quite a bit of money off the budget and got things in. I mean, they initially came in and said, Bob, there's no way we're going to get a community building. There's no way we're getting the plaza. There's no way we're getting this. There's no way we're getting that. And we really, really worked hard to get everything that we wanted in and get the price down and meet that price at the end of construction. We really can honestly say that we met that number and we met the schedule date. So it's kind of a challenge to do, but I think it's a well-worth exercise to do, to really sit down. So I wanted to assure the council that that same amount of energy and commitment is going to go into this facility.
So the next thing we're going to talk about, as I was...
Can I ask a question? That's going back to, you've got the design fees and FFNE together. Breakout, what ballpark, what is the FFNE? Or you may not have that in front of you.
Okay, FFNE was half a million, 500,000. The design fees were around a million. It was 6.5%, which I thought was a competitive fee. Is the same fee that they charged us on City Hall. So that met that. And then there was money allocated for security and AV. And that was around 700,000 for those numbers.
And the other thing, also like to know, you know, based on the 12,000 or so square feet we have in our existing space and the rental rate, you know, how that would compute out, what we would be saving per year on that.
Yeah, those are going to be on subsequent slides. We're almost there. Almost there. But I think the price per square foot, Mayor, is coming in pretty competitive on what we had here, which was a good baseline for me. I sat with Carter today and we went through all of the existing City Hall and what we ended up paying and where our baselines were here. And then said, where are we here? I think I'm going to spend a lot of VE-ing on the site to try to get my site numbers down and see if I can get those numbers way down. We already broached the idea with the next-door neighbors as far as getting grading easements. And they've all come back and said they'd be willing to do grading easements for us. So we eliminate the wall and that whole northern property line. So there's a couple of things we're going to keep doing. And we're going to keep banging away and keep looking at every which way we could save every dollar on the project and still maintain the quality that we have. But I think Priceline, this price per square foot's about the same or close to what we had here.
Okay. Well, aside from the need for the space and the safety of our citizens, we need to make sure that we can afford this building. And one of the things that we looked at was doing a financial forecast. So we looked at FY 2018, 19, 20, and 21. We did a financial forecast of what our revenue projections are. I was very conservative in doing this financial forecast and as we are in any kind of a financial assessment. And the revenue projections that you see here, they go up incrementally each year. But I will say that not included in these revenue projections would be the commercial build-out that has happened in 2017 and 2018. We will get those numbers in this fiscal year. But these are based on the 2017 Tax Digest information. So current programs and services, we, as far as expenditure projections go, we looked at current programs and services, the debt service payment that we have for Bell Memorial Park, which is a revenue bond that was included in our mileage rate, which is also what we're planning on doing with this facility as well, these facilities. And then the amount that we're transferring out to capital projects and what our contingency is every year. So the amount that we transfer out to capital projects is pretty much where we need to look at if we need to adjust any of the expenses to help pay for this facility. You're either increasing revenues or you're decreasing your expenditures. And the easiest thing to do is reprioritize our capital project prioritization, I guess, the capital projects that we have. For FY 18, you'll notice that the budget surplus is quite a bit different from what you have going forward. And this is because we were in the rebuilding year. And FY 17, we did, for FY 17 and 18, we did the change in how we recognize revenue. And we had to dip into our fund balance in FY 17. So in FY 18, we're rebuilding that fund balance back up to the levels that we have set it at, 25% of the next year's revenue projections. So you'll notice in this line, there's some surplus there for 19, 20, and 21. And on the next slide, we'll show where that surplus is going to go. All right. So for the Deerfield lease for police and court... All right, so for the Deerfield lease for police and court, it costs around two hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year. We're showing you the early out option here. This, this, where we get out of the lease space in May two thousand nineteen. So you see the base year is where we are right now. And in two thousand nineteen, you'll see that the cost is included for October to May and then the payout for the payout, early out penalty. The fire station lease, this is for forty-three. We are leasing that facility until twenty-nine, or October of two thousand nineteen, which goes into our fiscal year, twenty twenty year. And that is the debt service payment that Fulton County has on that particular facility. So we are paying, it's a pass through for this and we'll be finishing that up in two thousand twenty. So the two thousand twenty.
Just to clarify, but then we'll still have the asset, but that's, the debt will be paid off on that.
Correct, correct. And so in two thousand twenty, included in that total is the amount that we would need to pay, which is nine thousand dollars for the facility and the acreage that goes along with it. Evidence storage, we're showing in twenty twenty, in two thousand eighteen, it's sixty thousand dollars a year. It's five thousand dollars per month. And then two thousand nineteen, we're showing a forty-five thousand dollar amount that we pay out there. So we would, assuming that we would get out of there in May. The bond cost, we actually have Davenport here. I'm going to bring them up in just a minute. The bond that we are projecting here, like I said, was a revenue bond. So this is included in the millage rate that we currently have, the millage rate cap of four point seven three one mils, if we would not be increasing the millage rate for this particular bond. The bond that we were looking at was fifteen million dollars to cover the cost of the police and fire facility. But as Carter mentioned earlier, we also, right after we build the fire facility on station, on Highway nine, we're going to be moving right into replacing Station forty-two. So the crews out of there will be coming over into the Highway nine station and moving into the cost of constructing that. So it's about two million dollars for the cost of constructing that. We talked to Davenport about the cost of what it would be to combine it versus doing two separate issuances, a fifteen million dollar and a two million dollar issuance. And I know that they're going to present you with what that cost difference looks like. It's about, I think it was half a million dollars because the cost of issuance for having two separate issuances is what's driving that difference there. Then we looked at operating costs in two thousand twenty, I didn't do it in two thousand nineteen, but we have a little bit of operating cost in two thousand nineteen as well and then two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. So the variance that we have from the base year in two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, you'll see there is one point two million in two thousand nineteen, almost one point two million in two thousand twenty, and it goes down to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in two thousand twenty-one. Then we bring in the budget surplus that I was showing you in the financial forecast. So we will be able to pay for the cost of these facilities with the money that we would save from the reprioritizing of the capital projects fund. So I just want to show you that we will be able to afford these facilities moving forward. Any questions on that before we move forward? Okay, go ahead, Carter. So here we talk about next steps. The first thing we want to do is coming up next meeting is bring forward an intent resolution or reimbursement resolution. This is showing that we intend to use the bond funds to reimburse the city for the construction cost. This will, will bring us out into, we actually get the bond funding. It takes about sixty days to get the bond funding. So we need to first get the bond intent resolution before you. At some point within the next sixty days, we'll also need to come forward and call a meeting for the Public Building and Facilities Authority and do an end-of-governmental agreement between the P B F A and the City of Milton to, to show that the City of Milton will ultimately be responsible for this, but the Public Building and Facilities Authority will be the issuer for this particular revenue bond. We need to move pretty quickly on, on this timeline to get, to get it going and get it in there by May two thousand nineteen. So the design contract will be brought before you on April second for approval. The construction management contract will be coming on April sixteenth for approval and then construction begins soon thereafter. So we are training to get in there and like I said, early out in May two thousand nineteen. So before we end this, I'm going to actually bring up Davenport and we're going to talk about financing and what this looks like for the City of Milton. And this is, did you have it, Carter, or does he need to?
You escape out of that, you should be able to see yours. Mayor, members of council, good to see you again. So what we did, and there's going to be a lot of numbers here, please, if you have any questions, have me pause. So what we did first is we looked at a fifteen million dollar issuance. And then we've also got a two million dollar project issuance for the fire and rescue project. First one, take a look at where we stand today. So currently we've got thirty-two point five million of debt outstanding. That's the two thousand fourteen park project, the two thousand seventeen Geo bond that we did. So what we do, when we looked at the first case, we did fifteen million only. We assumed we would close around May first with payments basically starting in the next fiscal year. So you have nothing remaining in this fiscal year. So basically it would affect your two thousand nineteen. You'd have a full principal and interest payment that would come due, about a million one twenty-seven. Essentially what we did, just to give you a sense, as Carter mentioned, or gentlemen have heard about interest rates possibly moving up, we were very conservative with our interest rate. We used four percent. Just to give you a sense, we did an issue about five weeks ago, twenty-year, that was basically in the three thirteen, three fifteen range in terms of interest rates. We have seen interest rates rise since the beginning of February to about fifteen basis points. And that's fifteen one hundredths of one percent. So we have seen interest rates starting to creep up a little bit here and there. So there is that possibility, but this is very conservative. So hopefully by the time we get to market, should you give the go-ahead to move forward in the next sixty days or so, we would come in hopefully a lot lower than this. So that's going to be about twenty-two point five million total P and I over twenty years. It's a level payments over a twenty-year amortization. What we did is we added that in with the thirty-two point five, kind of show you what that would look like. One of the things that we always keep in mind is how fast we're paying the debt off. Of course, with the issue in fourteen and then last year, we haven't really gotten into those issues yet. But when we add these two together, the thirty-two and the fifteen, it's about fifty percent paid off in, in ten years. And so that's a good pace. We want to make sure we, we, we pay our debts back over a fairly rapid pace. One of the things we always look at is how it affects our debt ratios. You might remember the policies that we adopted before we went to the bond rating agencies. The two that we look at on the debt side, one is the total amount of debt divided by your full value or your tax base. We assumed about a two percent growth in this chart. You can see you're well within the policy we set of one point seven five percent. So this one is not a concern. The one we want to keep an eye on is the second one, and that is annual debt service divided by your budget. It's a way to think about it, in this case, divided by revenues. We assumed that the budget would remain flat essentially, except for the addition of new debt service. And you can see that we set a policy of fifteen percent, again, trying to make sure that we keep our bond rating where it is, the top end of the triple A. There's not a big gap there, but there's still a little bit of room if something were to come up and you needed to issue additional debt. But in talking with, with staff, it does, this kind of takes care of it. You've got your City Hall, public safety, courts, fire and rescue, nothing else major that we know of out there at the moment. So this should take care of things for a while. The one thing that we wanted to look at is if you decided to wait a year, you said, you know what, let's just wait and see what happens. And let's assume that interest rates did jump up. We assumed one percent just to, just to have a case to look at. So this is a full year delay and a one year, a one percent interest rate increase. Essentially what you'll see is that it increased the project by about two million dollars over the twenty years, roughly about a hundred thousand dollars a year of increased payments. So that's something to keep in mind that, of delaying it. That doesn't obviously take into account the possibility of project cost, construction cost inflation as well. So we did a second case. And the second case adds the two million dollar project. We called it Case One A. Essentially we've gone from fifteen to seventeen. So with issuing, we go from about a million one twenty-five of debt service to a million two seventy-five. It's about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase per year of debt service. It's a total of about two point nine million. So essentially about nine hundred thousand dollars of interest on that project. We added it to the existing case. You can see that the payout's still about the same, about fifty, fifty percent of paid in, in ten years. And when we looked at, I'm going to skip through these pretty quickly. It doesn't really move the needle on these two charts, except for this one. Essentially it bumps it up just a little bit more as we add that extra two million. But there's still a little bit of a gap there. We're very comfortable with that in terms of the rating side. The next case I wanted to show you is a one-year delay in the two million. What this case shows is if we do the fifteen million now, but wait and do the two million later, what does that do? We assumed again, a one percent increase in interest rates on the two million dollar piece. Essentially, as Stacy mentioned earlier, it's about a half million, call it four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand in terms of increased cost. Increased, part of that is the interest rate jump, part of it is the increase in the, the cost of issuance. So just to wrap up, we, we are very comfortable taking on this additional debt. It's not going to jeopardize the triple, triple A rating. When we look at it from a debt capacity, it does eat up some of that capacity. So if there's something else out there, we need to know about it now and want to make sure we're telling the rating agencies about it. But to our knowledge, there's nothing out there. Obviously a delay and an increase in interest rates is going to cost more. And what you can see is we think going ahead and doing both projects together, it's going to save you not only the cost of issuance, but it also will take any kind of interest rate risk off the table. And we, we, one of the things that we did take into account as we're thinking about that is the fact that you, some of that money is going to be sitting in the bank. It would be earning interest, the two million, if we don't, if we don't use it until it's needed a year later. So start to finish, Stacy mentioned, we're looking at about sixty days. Obviously we want to work the schedule around your meetings and things like that. That's what we're looking at. Happy to answer any further questions.
Anybody questions?
Well, that concludes our presentation. If there's any other questions you want to ask of any other staff members, please let us know.
Open up, anybody, anybody question, ma'am?
Chief, are we, obviously with the increase in repopulation in Deerfield area, I know we have a lot of call volume going up. I assume those, that those call volume charts were the case of a year, is that right? Was that a time period?
Those are two thousand seventeen numbers.
Are you seeing a rate of increase happening faster since we've had more people move to Milton as well?
We've seen an overall increase of about fourteen percent in our call volume.
Okay, and then we can assume that can continue. Are you seeing at all any kind of a risk of a decrease of our, of our being on time for calls? I know we have roughly a six-minute window, we usually arrive on calls. Are you seeing that starting to get pressed higher?
Yeah, and, and I apologize for not touching on that earlier. But our response time is an average of just over six minutes. Right now it's taking us approximately that long to get from Station forty-two, which is into that Deerfield area, which is their primary response territory, as well as Truck One coming up from the south. So if we put that station in that location, we're going to reduce our overall response time. Those trucks are going to now be in that area within minutes, which is going to reduce our overall response time. And then as you know, is that, you know, life in four to six minutes, we, we can save somebody. But once we go beyond that, you know, without breathing and all of that, we start to have brain damage and all of that on, on those critical calls, so.
And are you also too with the senior housing, things like that, are you starting to see more need because of those facilities as well?
That's correct. And I think that's what's driving some of our fourteen percent increases, those other facilities that are in our, our city today.
So chief, along those lines.
Yes.
This also impacts our I S O rating.
Yes.
Which could potentially be a benefit to our citizens, is that correct?
That's correct. By placing that, our ladder truck into our city now, I S O looks at a two and a half mile response. That's road miles, so not as the flow, the crow flies. So by placing that truck in our city, now we're going to get a full benefit from that, from that. Right now we're outside that two and a half miles, especially in that Deerfield area. So we, our, our I S O rating should improve with that. And I've been in contact with them. We're due for a renew, our review within the next twelve months or so. So I've already made contact and asked them if they could hold off based on this proposal that once we get this building built and we start collecting the data for the responses, then come out and review us and give us an opportunity to review then, not now. And they agreed to do that.
Yeah. When we first bought this property, we did some analysis of this. And I think you guys had estimated what the I S O rating would go to if the station were there. Do you remember what that is?
My goal is I S O one. We're at a two now in that area. So that one, to go into that one, I think the community is going to benefit from it as well as the commercial population over there because that's going to show a reduction in their insurance costs for, for those areas, so.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that to the public too. Basically if we have better services and better facilities, the I S O rating, the I S O rating goes down, the citizens will benefit because their insurance costs will go down. Any other questions?
I have, on the LEED certification, I, I'm assuming that that's something, since we didn't do it here, it's not a big impact to this building.
Yeah, LEED is a very, it's sort of a voluntary program that, that was structured just to try to encourage buildings to become more sustainable and meet some minimum standards to meet things like water usage and energy usage. And most of the building codes honestly have caught up to LEED. So that all the building codes have kind of reset their baselines higher to get the same equivalent to LEED certification. So most buildings today, when we design them, you sort of have to meet minimum standards that they're, that the building codes are pushing up anyway. So that achieving LEED is, is, is a, something where, you know, you, you get a plaque and, and, but you pay a lot of money for it. We'd have to have commissioning, we'd have to pay the consultants more and then all the contractors want more because they have to track all their waste and everything that's in there, it all has to be documented and sent in. When we did City Hall, we, we broached the idea with the council and the council at that time. It said, Bob, we just, we do want to meet all those standards. We absolutely don't want a City Hall that does not meet those standards. And, and I can attest that we've met all those standards here at City Hall. And, but we've saved a lot of money on not getting the plaque.
And that's it in a nutshell, basically. We'll do all the things that would make it LEED certified as best we can, but we'll save thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars not having a certificate.
Right, but we will meet all the standards.
I got a quick question, Joe. And I'm, I'm new to this whole government budget and everything, so forgive me. Is there an option? I'm just curious to pay the two million dollars for the fire station in cash out of our, do we even have that? Because when they said nine hundred thousand dollars in interest on two million dollars, I was kind of like, hmm. If we got the money, I'd rather just stroke a check. But I don't know if that was going to be reserved for other capital projects or.
We don't have that.
Okay, that answered that question, there you go.
And that number is over twenty years too, so it's costly.
Now, let me, actually let me qualify that. We don't have that and are able to sustain our other capital projects.
That's all I need now, thanks.
We do have that, but we'd have to trade something else, so it's not like we're, the city's broke. So, okay. All right, anything else? Okay, Suti, is there any, thank you guys for your presentation and everything. Suti, do we have any public comment on this second item?
We do, sir. We have, it looks like we have three now.
Okay.
And our first speaker is Bill Breakville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bill Breakville, one five two eight oh, High Grove Road. My wife, Vicki, and I are here tonight to support the abandonment of the golf cart path easements related to the Milton Country Club purchase. Our house is not located on the golf course per se, but we do have a golf cart path that runs all the way from just below the tennis courts all the way down to High Grove Road. The original intent of that particular golf cart path was to get the golf carts from the clubhouse down to the tee box on the first hole. We feel like that the original intent of the easements were granted originally to Alpharetta Country Club, then obviously to Milton Country Club for the specific use by those. Club, then, uh, obviously to Milton Country Club for the specific use by those, those private club members, uh, as a golf, golf cart path. Uh, obviously, uh, that original intent, uh, use is, is no longer in play. Uh, so, we're here tonight again to support the abandonment of those easements back to the, uh, original property owners. Uh, we, we do believe that there is a safety and security issue, uh, involved, uh, that would be involved in this, uh, to our home and our property. Uh, so, again, uh, our support is for the abandonment back to the original property owners.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Suti, if you please call the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Beth Wilson.
Hi, Beth Wilson. I live at one five two eight five High Grove Road. And I'm calling, I'm here today to, um, support the continuation of the Milton Country Club's pool, both for, um, a swim team and for the swimming community. Um, as maybe you know, a lot of kids in the area swim, and, um, the Atlanta Swim Association's date for starting a swim team for the season is coming up. Um, and I'm hoping that you guys will provide some guidance in a timely manner so that we can figure out if the swim team can continue. Um, in the community, I just found out last week that, um, the Triple Crown Neighborhood's swim team fell apart as well. So, now you probably have up to a hundred and fifty children in the city of Milton with no place to swim for the summer. So, the need is definitely there. Um, there are lots of parents like myself and others who have agreed to take this on, um, you know, to manage the swim team. And, um, we have at least four previous coaches who have agreed as well if the city would grant this, um, to continue to work with the young kids and the children of Milton who, you know, sometimes need something to do in the summer, and it's a great way to keep them in shape. Um, and it builds community. And so, I'm hoping that you will make some type of timely vote so that we can either move forward with organizing this or try to find other swimming places for our kids, um, for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Suti, if you please call the next speaker?
Our final speaker is Mr. Andy Wilson.
Hello. Uh, Andy Wilson, one five two eight five High Grove Road, Milton, Wood Valley Subdivision. Also support the abandonment of the easements, the original intent, I believe, as Bill said, was, uh, for golf cart access and, and transit and things like that. Uh, it, since the golf course no longer exists, uh, we want the city to abandon the, any easements. One of the easements actually does cut across my property. I really don't want, uh, and it's probably a hundred feet from the house, um, maybe thirty to forty feet beyond my fence, current fence line. Um, I just, you know, for a lightly-used golf course, it was okay, especially with people moving through. Um, but I really don't want foot traffic, bike traffic, et cetera, you know, cutting through my property. I would also like to say that there is, um, there's a majority of the homes, I don't speak for the Wood Valley neighborhood, but we conducted our own survey as well, as you guys did, uh, with regards to the viability of the pool. Um, there is interest on behalf of the subdivision, or the majority of the homes in the subdivision, um, to see the pool operate this summer to serve the needs of the swim team for the immediate community. And there's an interest on behalf of the neighborhood to work with council to figure out some type of public-private partnership, uh, to make the pool viable, uh, in the longer term. And so, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, is that all the public comments, Suti?
That's all, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, do you want to hear from me on this issue very quickly?
Sure. Yes.
All right. So, the, just to say at the, at the preliminary part of this, the instructions that I've received from staff are to move forward with abandoning the easement interest with respect to the golf course. You know, when the city purchases a piece of property, particularly with respect to easements that are ancillary to the property, we pick those up as part of the acquisition. So, that's no different here. We are in fact the party in interest that has those easements. There are basically two different types of easements. As the speakers mentioned, there's sort of the golf cart path easement that sort of meanders mainly on the city's property, but does meander off onto actual, um, private property owners' property. And, and to be fair, it is also true that the easements were intended for golf carts, uh, as part of a golf course. There's also the, you just knocked your ball off the golf course into my property easement that allowed golfers to actually walk onto adjacent pieces of property to collect their balls. Sort of a, I would consider that more of an omnibus easement that attaches just on the periphery to everyone. Then, instructions I've been given from staff are to abandon both of them, uh, for a variety of reasons. Um, one, obviously, the, the purpose of the easement no longer exists. Uh, the easements were granted with the expectation of this being a golf course, not a public park. Uh, and secondly, it'll clear up title, uh, to the extent that there's any encumbrance on those private property owners' property. I think it'll make disposition easier and, and candidly clear up title for everybody. So, we're going to do that. I did get asked the question, uh, why can't we just issue a quick claim deed? Well, I wish we could. That would be easier. Unfortunately, with government, it doesn't work exactly that way. The expectation in, in, with respect to government law is that government property has to be, uh, auctioned to the, uh, highest bidder. And, and that would even include interests in property. Uh, however, there is an exception, and that's the exception that we intend to use here, which is the ability of a municipality like Milton to get rid of what are called small or unusually shaped parcels of property that have no independent value, where the highest and best use of them is to get rid of them by conveying them to a property owner that would make good use of them. And I can't think of a better instance of that, uh, of taking an easement and blending it back in to the piece of property which it had formerly encumbered. That does involve a little more administrative steps, but that's what I believe the law anticipates, is that we have to go through this. So, unfortunately, in dealing with governments, it's not always the most efficient solution, but there is a solution that is supposed to generate transparency. That's sometimes considered to be a higher ideal than even efficiency in government. And that's why it'll take us a few additional steps. We'll have to work with planning to get some opinions from planning that the highest and best use of this easement interest would be to get rid of it and to blend it back into the property upon which it currently encumbers. And so, we'll be bringing that to you, um, and should be able to get rid of these easement interests if that is the will of the council in fairly short order. Mr. Mayor?
Do you need direction from council on that?
I don't. At this point, I've received direction I feel is appropriate from staff. Now, at some point, you will have to actually approve some quick claim deeds and some things that I'll bring to you, but for purposes of getting me started, no, we're already started.
And can you address again, just to clarify what the ti, you know, what would be your best guess on, on the timing of this? I know we've got some folks in the audience here that are interested in that.
Yeah, from, from, from a timing perspective, I would say it is very reasonable to anticipate we could have all of this put to bed by perhaps thirty to forty-five days.
Um, and then it, within thirty, forty-five days, it'll be back, we'll, in front of us, and, and all the legal, everything can be done.
Right. And, and one of the things driving that is just the number. I mean, we have to treat each of the, each of these as a separate parcel, and so, we're going to have to make some independent determinations with respect to each parcel, because each parcel is affected by the easement in a different way. So, we'll be drafting a bunch of resolutions and things of that nature. Once we get all the paperwork done, this will be pretty quick, but it's just getting that paperwork completed.
Okay. Is there any question? Rick?
Yeah, a quick question. Maybe Jim's going to cover this. Um, as part of this, are we planning to then do the cleanup and removal of the cart path? Is that something that we would write into that? Or is that just, would that be a separate initiative?
So, Ken and I spoke about this, and, and my recommend, I, I, actually, I don't have a recommendation. What will be the, what will be the more efficient way to go is do our planning and figure out exactly what it is we, we are going to do with the park, uh, based upon all the input we get. And then, if we are going to construct new trails within the park, if it is the council's will to remove those other, uh, those other trails, um, that would be the most efficient time to do that as opposed to send the, the equipment out there now. Um, that being said, if you want to spend the money now and send the equipment out there, or for that matter, you have no obligation to remove any of the pavement, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, obviously, getting, getting rid of the easement interest doesn't carry with it the right to have to put the property back in the position it was beforehand. But if you're going to remove the pavement, if you're going to remove the pavement, let's do it while we have the easement, because otherwise, we're going on to private property and committing a, you know, a trespass to go on to private property and remove the easement. So, once we get rid of the easement interest, then the city will be somewhat constrained about entering the property again.
But to that point, it, it is something where, that will be an additional expense to go in and separately do that. You know, we've also discussed it. Some people may have fen, you know, want to put fences up and this and that. So, we're going to have to work, as Ken said, it's rather complex with all the different property owners. But if, you know, council wants to look at that, we certainly could get some numbers to see what that would take.
It's not going to be a small number.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure. Um, Matt?
Just kind of a question to satisfy my curiosity too. So, procedurally, um, because we are a government and just a lot more legal stuff with this, would it have been, um, during the purchase acquisition, would it have been feasible for us to have directed the, um, the seller to reduce, eliminate the easements prior to the sale? Would that have been more efficient? Just curious.
Let me answer the question this way. Um, yes, private property owners have considerably more discretion with respect to the disposition of property than we do, uh, than governments do. However, if, if the council recalls, um, that transaction was, took place in sort of an abbreviated timeframe, and that would have been a little bit of work on part of the seller that I'm not sure the seller was prepared to do either. So, yes, there's no question they have greater flexibility, council member.
I was only asking in case, if something like this ever comes up again, we can treat it as a learning opportunity. So...
And I guess about the bottom line, you know, ultimately, we'll have the same result, um, for our citizens.
We, we can, we can do it too, just a little bit more pieces of paper to push.
Joe?
Well, just based on the email, some of the conversations, the statements from the citizens, that what I would say is the easement isn't the issue when it comes to concerns and safety. It's the trail that's the concern, because even if we gave up the easement and the trail was still there, we'd find people on it. Okay? We've already seen that, even though we put up no trespassing signs on the property, that does nothing to deter trespassers. So, so I think that sooner, probably rather than later, if we're going to address the safety concerns that the citizens have, we're going to have to get rid of that trail if that's not the trail that we want to keep. And, and I'm thinking that it's not if we're going down this road of, uh, abandoning the easements. So, we're in a...
Chicken in the egg, I would agree. Yeah, I agree. So, there are different trails. There are trails that are, that connect the horseshoe, so to speak?
Right.
That bring you over to the first hole. And, um, those are the trails that were, were mostly discussed by the speakers tonight. Um, and that's, those trails are utilized quite a bit by the people that live in, in the neighborhoods right around there to get over to the tennis courts. So, they are very likely being trespassed upon, well, I say that, they're, they're violating our signs out of pure ease walking over to the, uh, to the tennis courts. Those would be different than the trails throughout the hundred and thirty-nine roughly acres throughout the, the property that we could hit that are more, that more meander along people's backyards.
Right.
We don't have to, we don't have to do it all at the same time. If it made more sense to do those ones at the north end over there, and, uh, if we're going to do those, if that's the council's will, maybe it would make sense to do those ahead of time and then wait on the ones that meander around through the park. Um, it, it's, we, we could probably get some idea of numbers if Carter doesn't have them already.
Do you have an idea, Stephen, on, from a percentage point of view, if we looked at the golf cart path trail in its entirety, what percentage of it exists on easements?
We've got about twenty-five thousand feet of trail throughout the park, and about twenty-two hundred of that is within these easements.
Okay, so, so ten percent.
Why don't we do this, council? I'd like to ask our staff to take a look at kind of the, the, where the more, more of the issues are, the trails, the paths that are on the easements, what that would cost to come in and take those out now. And then the rest of it, if it makes more sense when we're doing the trails. And if you guys could bring that back to us, and, um, we can give you some direction on that. Anybody else? Somebody else have a?
I guess I'd echo what, what Mayor was saying. That was kind of where my question was going, is we're looking, we're looking at abandoning the easements, then the, the part of the trail that's on those easements, remove those. But I'd, I'd like to see the cost, like Joe had said.
Okay. I, I think it sounds to me that council be on board with that. So, if you guys could bring that back to us. All right.
And, um, where are we with the, the planning process? Um, I know that went out to bid.
Carter?
Who said?
Sorry. Planning process, uh, we've shortlisted firms. Interviews will be this week. So, we'll be hopefully selecting a firm and working through contract negotiations over the next two weeks.
Okay. Kathy, did you want to add anything to that?
No, no. That's the answer.
Okay.
Can I just clear one thing up on the merits? I want to make sure. So, Ken, can we not move forward with the abandoning of the easements if we're, if removing the trails is still pending? Or is that an agreement we can enter into with the, with the individual homeowners at a later date who have these, these, uh, trails along their property?
Right. So, I think that's a fair question. If, if we want to, to issue a quick claim deed on the other side of the abandonment or the disposition process, and as part of the actual deed document, we blend in the, the, the actual document that we have sixty days until such times to go on the property and remove the, the, the trail itself, we could do that. Yes. So, the answer is yes.
Or the other question, does each abandonment have to be done, do they have to all be done at the same time, or will they be done individually?
Individually.
And maybe if that's the case, whereas the ones that aren't affected, you do first, the ones that aren't affected with the trail on their property, you know, have an extension before we close on that, or, um, give time, or whatever. Or to your point, Ken, you can work it out with an agreement. So...
Yes. All, all of those are fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Just based on the conversations that I've had with some of the homeowners up there, and I can't speak on their behalf, I think that knowing that the easements were going to be abandoned would put, would, would give them, would alleviate some of the concerns.
Well, and I think it's pretty obvious, hopefully tonight, that that's the direction, and, uh, we don't anticipate any problems. So, okay. Anything else on the easements? All right. Talking about the pool.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give me just a minute as this is starting up. Okay, uh, Mayor and Council, approximately two months ago, we were here and speaking about, uh, what we saw as far as with the tennis courts and the pool. And the direction we received at that time was to move forward with the tennis program and to come back with more numbers on the pool. Uh, we do have the tennis program going now. Uh, Terry O'Brien is up and running. He's got a website. He's got a business model. Uh, you approved last week the rental of facilities. So, the tennis program is moving along well. Now, we're here to talk about the pool itself. And essentially, there are three options. Number one, simply do nothing. Leave the pool empty. Right now, the pool has no water in it. Leave it empty. Leave it covered. And, uh, just chain it off. That's the first option. The second, uh, was what if we were to open it just for the swim team so that they could function? Their program runs roughly, they'd be first ten days of May through the end of June. And then this third option is open the pool for the swim team, and then when the swim te, and also allow concurrent usage of the pool by the general public. And, uh, for purposes of here, I took a look at how things operated last year. Specifically, they pool itself during the time that it was general population usage. That was from Memorial Day to Labor Day. The swim team typically used the pool from eight AM until eleven AM, and then from eleven until eight PM was general public usage of the pool. So, that gives you the premise of how we're looking at this. Option one, uh, not trying to be facetious here, obviously, doing nothing poses the least risk to the city, though of course, having an empty concrete hole in the ground has a certain measure of risk. It is the lowest-cost option available to us. Uh, it takes an asset that we've purchased, and we, we make no utilize, no usage of it. And I think that has the potential for creating some citizen dissatisfaction based upon the feedback that I know I have received, and I believe that all of you have been receiving about the pool. So, option two, allowing us to run just the swim team, gives us the chance to allow the swim team to continue. And as , uh, you heard from, uh, Ms. Wilson, we found out recently, uh, that other subdivisions have, uh, Triple Crown to shut down their swim team. We have a, uh, a willing group of people here wanting to go ahead and run this, and that, I believe, was the issue with Triple Crown, that they didn't have anyone willing to run it. Um, our expenditures in doing so would be limited... Our expenditures in doing so would be limited to what I call the fixed costs operation of the pool, the fixed cost being the utilities, and I explain a little later in this document here. It would require some repairs that have to be done to the pool. Right now, the pool does not hold water. There is a leak, and Mr. Lucas is working with the group to try and find the source of that leak and provide the repair. But again, if we operate it just for the swim team, I believe there is the potential for some citizen dissatisfaction that we've made the investment in this pool and not made it available to the citizens. And so then we go to the third option, open the pool for the swim team as well as the general public. Again, it allows the swim, the Milton Mustangs to continue, opens the pools of public amenity. Our expenses now would go up because we would have the fixed costs and the variable costs. And what I refer to as the variable cost is the labor associated with running the pool, specifically lifeguards and a desk attendant. Still requires us to be, perform repairs on the pool. And I think a greater public access would create a higher level of citizen satisfaction. I do note that in the recent public survey, a pool was considered a desirable amenity of the city. And I don't think we had ever considered actually going out and putting in a pool, but now we have this opportunity here. And so the question is, do we want to make, take advantage of it? So what are the fixed costs? Well, we don't yet know what it's going to cost to fix the drainpipe, but Carter and I have spoken, and he estimates that this cost, once the leak has been found, can be repaired for a cost of under $10,000. In the last time we talked about this, we talked about the potential of resurfacing the pool. And I believe the direction that we received was, let's see if we can hold off a year before we make a decision on resurfacing the pool. And so that cost, we could potentially defer to 2019. We have done a bid process, working with five highly rated pool management companies. We've selected an organization that could do the work, should it be the will of the council to move forward here. And they could provide the pool and bathroom maintenance, all the chemicals, all the supplies for an entire season for $7,500. I've worked with the utility providers to try and get an estimate of what the costs would be, and the projection for the period of time that just the swim team would operate, which is the beginning of May to end of June, that electricity would be $5,000, water $500 to fill the pool, and then the Fulton County would require that there be a telephone there for 911 purposes. I want to make a comment on the electricity before it becomes a question. I worked with Sony Electric as best as they were able to, and they were only able to give me a group summary of the five meters that are at that pool, at the Milton, at the Milton Country Club. I truly believe the number for those seven weeks would be less than $5,000, but I don't have an ability to quantify it because I couldn't break it out. So I'd rather come to you folks and give you the higher number based on history, and then tell you my expectation, I'd be lower, than come in here and tell you a low number, then I got to go to someone and say, oops, I missed. So the electricity numbers are based on the numbers of the entire country club. And of course, we do, apparently we're not looking to operate the country club much itself, the building itself. So those are the fixed costs. Now, what are the variable expenses? Well, of course, you have all the fixed costs we just talked about. And then we'd have some additional supplies. We would have to have contract labor for lifeguards and for desk, for a desk attendant. The desk attendant's purpose is to make sure that someone coming in is a person who has paid an appropriate fee to be able to use the facility. Otherwise, if we don't have a desk attendant, the first person comes in, opens the gate, and everyone else gets in for free. We would have to have some type of mechanism to identify a person who is a member, something, you know, wristband or ID badge or something like that. I haven't, I didn't get down into the weeds on that, but I took an estimate based upon previous experience. Also, if we run the pool for an additional two more months, July and August, and into September, it would be expected another 3,000 per month on the utilities, on the, excuse me, on the electricity. And I'm also making the assumption of another $200,000 in water as natural evaporation results continuously in having to refill the pool. Okay?
Question, Jim.
Yes, Bert.
So the first slide that you just, the one previous to this was just running it during the swim team operation?
Yes, sir.
That one was the additional cost for the summer season?
That is correct. That is correct. So what is the potential revenue to the city? We had great success in converting the tennis program to a program partner in the identical model that we work with, with all of our other program models. I have been working very closely with Ms. Wilson, and we've come up with some pricing models based upon the real, we were able to get some data from last year's Milton Mustang swim teams, who had ideas of costs, and what are the, all the components to running the swim team. And we were able to come up with a number, a budgetary number, that would allow the Milton swim team to charge their participants the same amount of money that they were charged last year. And that still includes a 15% commission to the city, just as we collect from every other program partner. And if we do this, my, my proposal would be that we simply set up the swim team as another program partner, continue to treat all of our program partners as equally and fairly as we can. So that would, if they are charging 135%, excuse me, $135, excuse me, the 15% would come to 20, 25, and a commission back to the city of a little over $1,000. So then came the question of public use. If we go to public use pool memberships, I made the intentional decision to not compare this pool to private country club pools, because we're no longer a country club. We don't have the restaurant services, we don't have the, the weight room. This, it's a pool, it's a public pool. And Alfred has charges $100, you know, I was also, by the way, comparing outdoor pools, not auditoriums, you know, where there's an indoor pool. And I, I believe we could have an estimated family price of $150, and I think that would be considered within the market of what, what's considered a fair price, or $150 for the season. I took some very conservative numbers here. I try, in my budgeting, I try to estimate my costs high, my revenues low. And if it works out better, great. If not, you know, I've tried to paint as fair a picture as I can. We built the model for the budget for the swim team at 50 swimmers, though quite candidly, you've already heard tonight, the potential is that it could be much greater. And we, we have no data at all on the total number of members from the country club. So I, I took a bit of a guess, and I said, if we can get 100 people, I mean, families, I think we could be doing good as a first-year effort. Concessions, that's also something extremely difficult to predict. The folks who were there, they were used to having a full kitchen, bar service. We have no intention of operating the full kitchen, we would not be proposing any type of bar service. We're talking more like a grill-type concession operation. And I will share with you that I have had a conversation with the current concessionaire at Bell Memorial Park, who has expressed an interest in participating if this opportunity were, was made available. So does the community want this, or we need it? We were able to collect the database of all the participants in last year's swim team, as well as some previous year participants as well. And we sent a survey to 75 past team members. We got a response rate of over 50%. I have never done a survey in this city where I got more than 30%. And even then, that was rare. But 35 people did respond, indicating that they would participate if it was made available, and indicated that they bring a total of 67 children. Again, knowing this data, I still estimate it 50, because there's people whose situations could change, change their minds, we'd go to a different team, we took too long to make a decision, whatever. And again, please note that Triple Crown is, now gives us a pool of people to participate. As far as the public, public use, we have no type of formal survey data, though I've had quite a few people reach out to me, let me know how much they would like to participate. I have received some information that the citizens up around the area would be very interested in participating. The one thing we just have to make sure people understand is that, especially for those of the neighbors of the Milton Country Club, that the experience is going to be different. Okay? It's not the country club anymore, it's now, it would now potentially be a public pool with a limited concession stand. So that's the data in a nutshell, happy to go over it. What I would ask of you folks is to please give us some guidance. We are getting into an extremely time-sensitive issue of, do we pull the string we're going to do it, or not? I recognize at this point, there's nothing for you to vote on, though if you wish us to go forward, I would be coming back to you folks in future weeks with a contract for a pool maintenance organization, and also a contract for a program provider, partner in terms of the Milton Swim Team.
And I'd like to, you know, get some feedback from the council too, on which options. I, I believe there's, you know, majority, along with the citizen feedback of at least doing the swim team, but then opening on up to the, to the public side, going to that step too. So we'd like to not only get your feedback, but your ideas on that, council, but the feedback you've gotten from citizens on that too. So we'll open up to not only that information, but questions, so. Matt? Go ahead, Matt, and then.
Jim, safety is important, especially with our kids and things like that, and I feel like we're a little bit rushing on this. Not that I don't believe we can do it. My, my concern is, if we were to go all in and do this and have it up and running, because we're dealing with water, and because we're dealing with lifeguards and things like that, on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being absolutely positively the best safe pool that we could ever have, do you think we could reach that level this year with all of this, if we went all in with this? Or should we do this more of a gradual approach, start with just a team? And your thoughts, for safety being the primary question?
Not only with the pool, but with every single program I'm involved with, safety is the number one priority.
Right.
Okay, so I live and breathe it. I don't want to sound like the Granger guy, but this is important. I'd like to bring you back to this variable expense. And I, this is something I've made the call on, and certainly I accept that there's a number of people here who can overrule me. However, when it comes to the contract labor for lifeguards and desk attendant, I show estimates of $21,900 to $35,200. Those numbers vary because I've priced it two ways. One way is to have a desk attendant and a single lifeguard, and that's how the pool operated last year. Last year, it was a private club, and their operation methodology was that every 45 minutes, the lifeguard would step off the stand, take a 15-minute break, and kids were ordered out of the pool, and it was considered adult swim. The suggestion I've made is that while that may have been okay for a private club, we as a city have a lot more risk and exposure here. And so I've proposed a second guard, and talked with the service about allowing the two guards to overlap and to give each other a break, and still continue to provide the opportunity for a break. And you can still do an adult swim. One of the strategies of a 15-minute adult break swim is that it encourages young, energetic kids to get out of the pool and go to the bathroom, to prevent inadvertent situations that potentially happen. But I believe that it would be incumbent upon us as a city to have that higher level of standard, because just because kids aren't in the pool doesn't mean an adult can't have a health problem in the pool. And it's, I think that's critically important. Also, the organization I've looked at, I'm not going to name their name, but they are extremely reputable, well-known organization, cover many pools in the area. And I spoke with Sam Traeger earlier today, and he wanted to see that an organization I brought in would be willing to offer the city a $2 million liability policy. And I said, Sam, well, is $10 million liability enough then? So yes, I believe we can achieve the level of safety. Yes, we have been working quickly, but this is a case where we're trying to be nimble as a city to provide the community services.
And to clarify, with that budget, with the chemicals, you did have them include the chemical that turned her red if somebody has an accident, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We're good, never mind.
Oh, okay.
Joe? Yeah, we're good.
Yes, the price includes all chemicals, yes.
Okay, we're good. Go ahead, Joe.
So Jim, well, first of all, just to let you know what I think, I, I think that it's only fair to make sure that this program at least continues on this year, the same way we continue on the tennis program, to allow everybody time to react and reacclimate to what the new reality is. But the more important issue is, because this is more problematic for the pool, I think, than it is for the tennis program. I'm a little worried about the longevity, that our ability to sustain the program with the pool the way it is. I think the resurfacing thing is sort of the tip of the iceberg. And I have no reason to, you know, think that the worst is going to happen from a pool point of view, but I just, I'm worried that the pool actually needs a lot more maintenance than what would be reasonable, and it may be that we need to redo the pool in its entirety. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, I think that's a huge opportunity, and certainly the success of this program this year would be a good indicator as to whether or not it makes sense for us to move forward. So would you agree with my poor assessment of the, the state of the pool itself?
Let me take a crack at that.
And then I'd like a shot too. Go ahead.
So we don't have any reason to believe that the pool is in, pool equipment is in bad shape. When we did our assessment earlier this year, the pool equipment itself was in pretty good shape. We do have an issue with the leak that we're working through. The initial assessment where we thought the leak was didn't turn out to be factual, so we're doing some evaluations of the underground piping. That testing will be done this Friday. But I would think that the repairs to that would be relatively minor. So short-term, I think we know what we're getting into. Long-term, you have your standard pool operational costs and maintenance of those, of that equipment going forward. So other than those issues that we've brought forward to you regarding the pool surface, I'm not aware, pool surface and the leak, obviously, I'm not, I'm not aware of any other problems with the equipment that exists right now.
So I shouldn't be pessimistic? Okay, good.
Well, I don't, I don't want to say that, but.
I would say be cautious. Don't forget, the effort of this exercise was to make a short-term decision as we prepare for long-term one. We're in effect buying a used car, we know there's a couple issues with it, but, you know, you're counting on things to be successful down the road, and if problems come up, we address them as they come up.
Bert?
So that ballpark estimate of $10,000 for underground repair is based on something other than just saying, oh, it should be best, it should be less than $10,000?
It's only based on our discussions with the contractor, that if they did find a leak, they would be able to do it within the existing piping, so it's not digging up the piping to replace it. So apparently, the piping for this pool is quite a bit larger than what they had anticipated, what they would see in a normal pool, which is why they couldn't do the underground testing before, they had to actually sub that work out. So they felt like if they found a leak, that they would be able to fix it internally rather than digging everything up.
Basically, use the, use the existing as a sleeve or something.
I think so, correct.
All right. Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, a couple of questions. If we, I guess I'm, like Joe had said, I'm more in favor of actually going with option number three for this first year, and then do an assessment of where, where things turn out, so we let the, the neighbors get a chance to use it in the way we've done in the past. And I like the idea of what you're talking about with the fee structure, because subdivisions that actually have pools, we have to pay for that with homeowner association fees. And I know a public pool, even like Alpharetta, they've got fees if you in fact want to use it. One other question on pool equipment, including lounge chairs, tables, that type of thing, do we have those assets, and are those usable? Because I think that would be part of the traction of if people still wanted to go there, is, are there a place to sit down, or is it just a pool?
There, there is furniture out there. It probably needs to be cleaned, but it's functional.
Okay. So would that came, that was part of the purchase, when we got the asset, we still had all the tables and things that they had used in the past? And I think...
That bottle's a ketchup. Bottles of ketchup.
We might want to replace that. And I think you already answered the second question about when you're, you did the assessment of the equipment, you're looking at the filtration system, the pump motors, all that stuff. You've looked at it, you know the age of it, and it looks like we're not going to have an issue short term.
You know, I never believe anything until it's up and running, but from what we could tell from the visual assessment, it all looked like it was in pretty good condition.
Okay. Thanks.
Laura? I agree with Councilmember Moore on the option three. I think if we go to the, the extent of getting the pool open for the swim team, that it's just a little bit more effort to make it available to the overall community. I do think that there, I've gotten a lot of input as far as other people in the area wanting access to a community pool, and that was the reason I was interested in where we were with the planning of doing the stakeholders and finding out what, what this will become. I felt like the fee for the pass or at 150 was probably lower than what most folks might be willing to pay. That's just a suggestion. I know last year, we were very close to the situation. There was often no food there last year. So I think that's a great idea to have a concession stand, if, if that's a possibility. But I do think that people would value having access to a pool that don't have one in their backyard or live on open roads, so...
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, Matt?
I do as well. I think that's, I think going all out is probably the appropriate way to go, so long as we use the safest organization as far as that goes. Budget-wise, staff, are we okay with going to the maximum on this? Is that in our budget?
No, it's not in our budget.
Okay.
None of this is in our budget. Park wasn't in our budget. But we are going to have to, we're going to have to, we're going to have to kind of build this bridge while we're on it.
Do you have any thoughts about where we'd be getting the money from?
We're rearranging our, our capital projects. We continue to rearrange that. The offsets associated with, with T-splat still plays a role in our ability to be able to have a little more flexibility in our future forecasting, and we just, you know, press a little down here, press a little down here, and at the end of the day, we have something that looks good.
Okay.
Maybe we'll have a bunch of people join and worry about it.
So it, it sounds like the majority, if not all, council's on board with pursuing the last option to do the swim team as well as some public, public access. Is that correct?
So long as we can figure it out where we're getting the money for, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, fortunately, the money's, you know, smaller items, which staff will have to work through that and bring it back to us, so... Okay, so you guys kind of have direction from council?
Very clear.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Okay. Sudhi, do we have any public comment on the next item?
We do not, sir.
Okay, well, up that to Kathy.
This is discussion of RZ 1802 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Base Code to amend Table 8A Building Function.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would also like to discuss RZ 1803. They both relate to the same issue, but there are two different tables that would have to be changed should we move forward with my proposed amendment, which is, the, in the Crab Apple Form Base Code, we have a T4 zone, and then we have a T4 open zone. And the T4 zone is more on, on, on the edge of the zone and serves as a transitional zone from residential areas into a more denser use type of downtown retail, restaurant, and the like. And so I'm, I'm going to talk about that transitional area, the T4 open. The T4 open allows, right now, live-work units. It allows for general service type of uses, and it allows for general retail and restaurant when placed on, on a corner location. What I feel was left out, and which I would like to propose the amendment for, is to allow for an office use. To me, from a planning perspective, it's a great transition from a, from a lower use of a residential area to a more higher density. And that office was left out, and so it really doesn't give the flexibility to a developer to put that use in in an unlimited way on both first and second floors, or even third, for that matter. So I, I thought that this was an oversight on, on, on the original writing of this code, and I really feel that this correction, if you will, this amendment, would be really relevant. So that's the proposal.
I'll start with Matt.
I agree. That was it.
Laura? I have a question. So the, this would allow, say, for example, in the live-work environment, for someone to actually live here, have an office?
Well, that's how it's written currently, that you have to live and work in the, in the same structure. But this would allow would be for the work without the live, if that makes sense.
And, and this is, the, the T4 is closer, would you say that that's where some of our existing neighborhoods are? Say, in the Crab Apple area, the neighborhood, you know, older neighborhoods would, are now adjacent or abutting to...
It's more on, on the edge of this zone. And so it was, it was built in to be sort of a transitional type, so it wasn't, it, it didn't allow for a lot of density of uses, whether they be restaurant or retail. And I think that's fine, that's very appropriate. But to me, an office use is a rather benign, and when you look at some of the other uses allowed, with the amount of traffic generated by that type of use, I thought it was an oversight that beared some amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody? Bert, Joe, Brett? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Got some direction there. Sudhi, is there any public comment on this next item?
There is not, and yes, Kathy just talked about it. There's not.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So is there anything else?
I... Oh, I'm sorry, yes. You're all waiting for me, I'm sorry.
No public comment on...
I've already talked about it.
Anything else from council?
I do, I have some. Laura? I, I got a few calls about the historic markers that went up this past week, so that was very exciting, and they look great. I think it's awesome as far as our sense of place. I just wanted to bring that up. It's nice when you get a call about something good. I'm learning that. And just a suggestion is, I'm dying to read them all, so maybe at some point, they can be on our webs, our website, so that you can, you don't have to stop and, and hold up traffic. Yeah. Anyway, very exciting.
We, we are working on a program with the historic marker group to be able to, first of all, do some outreach regarding what, what's going up, but also, on a larger scale, how they can be utilized. I think there, there's a couple of online programs, maybe you can work even through with Alfreda, there's a few things in the work on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll conclude our meetings. Thank you.